We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome. This is the October 13, 2014 Newark City School District Board of Education Regular Meeting being held at the Roosevelt ASC. It is now 6:30. Jeff, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Blowers?
Here.
Mr. Carr?
Here.
Mr. Harden?
Here.
Mrs. Nickam?
Here.
Mr. Bond?
Here.
Mr. Carr, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doug, any resolutions or recognitions tonight?
Uh, not tonight.
Okay, we will go right into special reports then. Jeff, the five-year forecast.
We've got copies of the forecast on both of these whiteboards and then my PowerPoint will actually be shown behind you. If you can't read either one of those, I know you'll be able to read the PowerPoint, but if you can't read those numbers, there's a hard copy at each one of the board members' chairs so that you can look at that while we're going through the PowerPoint.
The introduction? Just a second, provide.
Let the record show that it's eight minutes long, right? That's all right. If they can see that, then we'll just, we'll talk slow and I'll point stuff out.
All right, we can go on this side.
Okay, go, do one at each. The board members got it, then they can see that one.
Well, no question about that.
Can we combine some technology update?
Get an example of the technology update, huh? It worked fine at 2:30. While she's working on that, I'll let the public know that what we're going through here is the five-year forecast. It shows the axles up through 2014 and shows projected up to 2015, 16, 17, 18, 19. Any of our public that is watching on the TV, they can contact my office. They can come in and I can give them copies of this forecast if they're interested in seeing the numbers that we use for it and the budget that's incurred here. I'll begin by talking about the introduction while I'm working on that. It takes $5.2 million per month to run Newark City Schools out of our general fund only. That's not counting the grants and federal, city, federal and state grants. Most months, we have a general fund balance of approximately three months or about $16 million, ending balance each month. The Ohio Department of Education would like for a district to have at least three months operating balance to consider you fiscally sound. The first line, the top line on that chart right there where my little red laser is pointing, is the first one we're talking about. It's line 1.010, general property tax. Assumes that the emergency property tax levy will be renewed and this levy expires on December of 2019. Line 1.02, which is the second line on that green part of the chart right there, my hands are not too steady, is it? Okay. It's tangible personal property tax. The district received $1,007,635 in fiscal year 2014 for tangible personal property tax. We confirmed with the county auditor that this should continue. This personal property tax, although companies like Owens Corning and other production companies no longer have it, utilities still do. And that's what we're getting from utilities is about $1,001 per year. And pretty much forecasted that flat through the next five years. Line 1.03 is the income tax, the third line there. The district, the income tax is projected actual for 2014, then we bumped it up at 3% per year and assumes that the continued renewal of the income tax, which it expires in December of 2017. It'll be the first tax that we come up back upon the ballot for renewal. It expires in 2017, so I believe we can probably put it on the ballot in 2016. The revenue forecast, we continue. The unrestricted grants in aid for fiscal year 2014, that's line, the fourth line down right there, follow the bouncing ball. Fiscal year 2014 was $28,056,999 and we projected 2015 through 2019, we're projecting a 3% increase over the previous year. We have success. I'm gonna down about four slides. Seth? Continuing on with the revenue forecast. Can you get it to move down?
Yeah.
1.04 is, there you go, you got it. Restricted grants in aid is projected at 3% increase per year. 1.05 is property tax allocation, basically projected flat for 2015 through 2019. Line 1.06, all other revenues projected to increase at 3% per year through fiscal year 2019. Line 2.010 through 2.050, other financing sources are projected flat for 2015 through 2019. And line 2.06, other financing sources is where we are tracking the casino revenue money. It appears to have flattened out at about $320,000 is what they're projecting for us this next year. If you recall, or you may not recall, originally when they were touting the casinos and we were voting on it, they said that Newark City Schools would probably get around $650,000 a year. They obviously did not take in to consideration the racinos like Cylodons because that has taken revenue away from the casinos, so we're told, and that would probably be right around at $320,000 per year is what Newark's normal allocation will be. So the casino revenue is in this forecast. Moving on to the expenditures, which is the yellow collar, yellow collar key code. First line is personal services. This is basically the salaries and wages for our people. Fiscal year 2014 is actual. Fiscal year 2015 through 2019 includes a 2% increase for step raises and also a 1% increase for a general wage increase for each of the five years. Line 3.02 is the next line, employee retirement and insurance benefit. And this line is part of our medical insurance as well as other benefits. We have included a 10% increase for each year from fiscal year 2015 through fiscal year 2019 for medical insurance increases. And we are fully self-funded beginning in fiscal year 2015, this year that we're currently in. Line 3.03 is purchase services. We show it increasing 5% per year fiscal year 2015 through fiscal year 2019. Line 3.04 is supplies and materials. It increases 5% per year for fiscal year 2015 through 2019. Line 4.30, other objects increases 5% per year from 2015 through 2019. Finally, expenditures, line 5.01 to 5.05 is other financing uses and all projected at or near the same levels as fiscal year 2014. These assumptions were reviewed with the finance committee and agreed to by the finance committee. And I want to thank them for their input on that and I feel that they're fair but conservative assumptions. Issues that we have is the uncertainty of the state budget allocations. Been better the last two years than it was in previous years. Uncertainty of federal budget allocations. Renewal of local property tax before 2019, which I've mentioned, that this assumes that it will be renewed. Recovery of the local economy to at least support the projected 3% increase in income tax, renewal of the income tax. Other market swings impacting utilities, materials, supplies, and fuel costs. Revenue versus expenditure, line 6.01, that's the red line, highlighted line there. Line 6.01, excess revenue over, under, over or under expenditures. We expend more each year beginning in fiscal year 2016 than we take in gradually depleting our cash reserve. In fiscal year 2015, we spent less by $163,911, then started in 2016, we overspend by $962,623. We overspend in 2017 by $2,257,353. In 2018, it's $3,671,953. And in 2019, it's $5,226,506. Those are not cumulative numbers. Those are each year, that's how much we're overspending. Each year, that's how much we're overspending. It's not a cumulative number. Cash balance is the green line on your handout or the green line on the slide there. Shows that our cash balance projected at the end of fiscal year 2015 will be $17,427, $442. 2016, it'd be $16,464,819. Fiscal year 2017, it'd be $14,207,466. 2018, it'd be $10,535,513. And fiscal year 2019, we're still in the black, $5,309,007. So we're in the black with a cash balance each of the five projected years, even though we're starting to eat away at that cash balance and get, and make it a little bit slower each year as we go through. Summary, continue reviewing all programs, cost versus benefit. Mr. Ute and his staff has done a very good job of that ever since I've been here for the last five and a half, six years. Continue thinking outside of the box. Do not think, well, that is how we have always done it. I think our staff has done a good job of that too because some of the things that they used to do, they don't do that way anymore. Continue the attrition of jobs and restructuring of jobs as employees retire. We had, what, 22 or 24 people retire last year that we replaced, I believe Barb did when it did? About 38 people. I'm low. So we're doing, to continue with attrition of jobs and restructuring as new, as employees retire. We need to continue to work with the unions on cost reduction. Based on what we saw in Reynoldsburg, that's a huge issue there that we continue to work with the union. Are there any questions on this forecast or comments that wish to be made by the board?
Can you just explain the difference between unrestricted grants and restricted grants, please?
Both of those come from the state. Restricted grants have specific expenditures that you could spend that money on. Unrestricted grant goes wholly into the general fund and can be used however the board and the school district deems necessary.
And that is from the state?
That comes from the state, both of those lines.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think it is important to mention, Jeff, that while this all looks really good to us, that 2019 cash balance is basically a one-month reserve at that point, so.
That's exactly right.
It's important that we continue to mind our money well.
Okay. I might mention, at the time that you said that, as a reminder, before we even get close to the, to the levies, the, the emergency tax, property tax levy that was passed in May of 2009 was billed as being a five-year levy, but it would only last us for three years before we went into the red. We are now entering the sixth year of that and basically I'm saying for another four years, we should still be good. So a levy that was sold to the public as being a five-year levy that was only going to last three years, I feel will last 10 years unless the state or federal government pulls the rug out from under me.
Line 3.020, employee retire insurance benefits, including a 10% increase from fiscal year 2015 through fiscal year 2019. Is that 10% over that period of time?
It's 10% each year.
Each year?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Medical insurance has been going up 6% to 20%, depending on where you are and how you fund it.
Turns out, he said, turns up to 12, and he's the expert.
More than I am. I will defer to him.
They're gonna be 12. That's after the savings for going self-insured and stuff.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Jeff, thank you.
Do you want to vote? The five-year forecast that's as fresh in your mind is actually on the agenda for item 2C, and I prefer to have that vote separate. We can either do it now or we can do it when it gets to my section, whichever we prefer.
I'm okay with doing it now.
And roll, roll.
Do we have a motion?
Some moves.
Second.
No other discussion?
I have heard move, Tim, second.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Doug, review of the district report card.
As we get into that, the transition into our grade card and that, as we look at comparing this year's grade card with the grade card from the past, and we have technology problems again. We're all right. As we look at comparing the past, it's awful hard to compare this new, new grade card to one from the past. So we're gonna really focus in on some trends and some of those type of things. You know, I would say as Jeff and I talked, you know, we talked with our team, thanks, Jeff, we talked with our team here and, you know, what's major and what's important to a community. And as Jeff just showed our community, the board and the community, forecast, it's probably better than, I don't know, let me say over 90% of the schools in the state of Ohio easily on a conservative fashion. Where's that measured on a state report card? From that standpoint, because we're supposed to be fiscally responsible and if we can go, you know, we're six years out without asking for new money right now, which is very good. If we can go even further, that's even better. And I do appreciate Jeff's work and he lays stuff like that out for us financially that we all can understand and we've worked hard with Jeff's group to stay, you know, on target with our financial goals and we appreciate that, Jeff. Jeff's department's always very helpful. And then I will plug, since he did talk about insurance and increases on insurance, and I would thank Albert, because we're all below trend, and I would thank our wellness committee, particularly my, Brandon Bird, does a lot of work for our employee wellness program. We have a lot of neat things. We've got, this Friday, we have a cancer walk prior to the football game at 4:30 and anybody's welcome to come out. And those are just some of the things that the wellness committee does, promote wellness. In November, we have a big, a wellness fair for our employees and well, about 400 people are taking that. And so that's important because it does reflect what we're doing with the five-year forecast and the insurance. And so I appreciate the work of that group. All right, we're gonna talk a little bit about grad rate, mobility, and a report card and show you some trends and those kind of things. I'll ask Maura and Mendy to help out too when their slides come up. Overall grad rate. Now, you know, when ODE released our, our graduation rate about a month ago, there's some heads turned down here and said, "That doesn't make sense." And so we called ODE to say, "Make sense out of this." And they still haven't made sense out of it, but we're gaining some headway. Either they made a mistake last year or they need to do what they did last year or this year so we can compare it. And I'll show you. We put a little last year up there where it's up over 86%. You can see that on the, on the chart there. Two years ago, the Newark Digital Academy went to a dropout recovery school. And what that meant was those dropouts in that school no longer counted on our report card. That's reflective last year at the 86%. This year, they counted again. Why? Why, ODE, did they do that? Well, they shouldn't have, that shouldn't have been that way last year. So basically, last year, our high school and district report card, graduation data was the same. And I've had questions saying, "How are they different, district and high school?" Well, NDA's figured in, the Newark Digital Academy has figured in, this year's scores again, and will be the next year or two. And then they'll go away. And so we wanted to say, well, apples are apples and those type of things, you know, that's all just data on paper. So how well did we do? So we've got data here now that shows in 2011, we were at 70%. We took a step forward last year if that data would have been counted in again. Are you following me? And it would have been about 74%. And then this year, it's 76%. So we really didn't take a jump backwards. We actually took a step forward. We're talking, we're still gonna talk with ODE to say, you know, it is what it is, but, you know, give us a ruling on this on how you did that. But that explains why that jumped backward, which actually was a step forward. So we're gonna talk a little bit about mobility and those type of things because a couple years ago, Newark had the highest mobility rate in the state of Ohio. This year, pardon?
For high school.
For high school. Yeah, exactly. For high school. This year, I think we're fifth. Seth, can you skip to the mobility chart, please? We'll go ahead and find that. So when we're talking with people about a mobility rate, what is mobility rate? Mobility is how much movement is there for students between schools and districts? So look at the percent of the state population that stay in the same building or district for less than one year. Okay, so we have students come in and then they move out. We have students from school to school, which will show you our school mobility rate for elementary, middle, and high school that move in and out at one time. Last year, more than 19% of NCS students were in the same school for less than a full academic year, highest in the county. Just a comparison, the lowest was Johnstown at 2.5%. And as we're talking about mobility, you bet that has something to do with student achievement. In our five most similar districts, we had the highest mobility rate tied with Hamilton City. Similar districts average was 15%. And our average is a little bit over 20 in a three-year period, which we'll show you. And then NCS has the 16th highest mobility rate among public school districts in the state of Ohio. So mobility rate within our district, I guess this is within and outside, but you can see on this chart with the elementary schools here where, you know, our highest mobility rate, all the way down to the smallest, smallest in the elementary schools. And so we say, we, we don't determine that. We don't, we don't really have a lot to do with that as a district. But we do say, if that's what it is, what are we doing, Mendy Vaughn, curriculum director and principals, at that level to ensure that mobility will be lessened as, as best it can? And so you should be doing the same work in each elementary school in the same right and grade level on the same day. So that if you did move, you would be doing the same thing that, our goal was to say, if you moved on Tuesday and you moved Wednesday to another school, you'd be doing the same work that the kids were doing yesterday in that, so it would help you out a little bit. Same thing in the middle schools. And then a high school, you know, that's hard to do because that's people moving in and out of the district. And you see, we talked about the average. Look at our last three years. We're at 22.8, 20.9, and now 19.8. So the average is over 20% mobility rate in that time period. And so what are we doing for those students who move in? Because what happens, you can move in for six months and move away and not appear in any school in the state of Ohio and count against our graduation rate. And so that's why mobility rate is such a, that's one, one factor why it's important. The other would be the curriculum part if you're bouncing from school to school. So when we go back to, we're just curious to say, I, I wanna know what our graduation rate is for students who have been here a while, students who come in and out. So you see the overall in red, our graduation rate, and then students here that less than one year is definitely a significant part of our graduation rate formula. Seth? Oh, and then we did one to three years. And again, this spike right here, that's reflective of the dropouts that not, or not including the dropouts at NDA. So you're gonna have that jump on this one also. And then look at our more than three years. This line right here, if you're in our district more than three years, we're gonna top out in the upper 80s or low 90 on an average percent. And that's pretty doggone good. So that does have an impact. So those of you who have students in the district and you're here more than three years, our dropout rate isn't at 70% for, for that group. We already talked about mobility rate. We're, we're gonna look at some trends now. We're gonna talk about some areas to work on that I'll have Mendy and Maura help out with a little bit. So we're identifying our grade card. These are some of the things we're looking at, some trends. Mendy, you wanna?
Um, and this is third grade reading and math. And so, um, third grade gets a, do you find your microphone?
I can read.
Did you hear me?
Well, I think you heard it.
I was gonna say, I'll try not to yell too loud. For third grade, because of the third grade reading guarantee, the reading is the, is the key piece. Math, you know, this year lagged a little bit behind typically. Our math typically is a little higher than what the reading is. So we're looking at what our interventions are and looking closely at the students who are identified as not on track and also refocusing with our literacy to make sure that the instruction that we're giving and the way that we're benchmarking to make sure that those pieces of data align to those students and how they're performing on state tests. So we're looking closely at those pieces as well. And then looking at what professional development is needed for staff. Fifth grade reading, we're not quite sure why this year took a nosedive, so we're gonna keep an eye on that one. The fifth grade test is, is by ODE's own admission, one of the toughest tests and it's just by virtue of the content that they put on it that it's a little more difficult. But our fifth grade, although the indicators dropped, our fifth grade has the highest value added. Fourth grade gets better indicators, but fifth grade gets better value added. So our students are making more growth even though it's dropped a little. So they're gonna, we're gonna continue with that and just make sure that the, the drop this year is kind of an anomaly and we hit back up on the progression upwards. Doug, do you wanna talk about value added or you want me to?
You can.
Okay. This is the value added data and they've released the district data, but they haven't released the teacher value added. Value added, if you think about value added, it takes the students' third grade year as their baseline year. It lines all the third graders up in a line statewide from the lowest score to the highest score and says, "We're converting your standard score to an MCE. We're putting you all in the line and then we're gonna watch from year to year to see if you keep your place in line or if you move up in the line or if you move back in the line." And that's kinda what value added says. And so if you look at it, our fourth grade has negative value added. Our fifth grade goes back up again. So at the elementary level, we're trying to figure it out. And it's not at all buildings. We have some buildings that have the inverse, but fourth grade seems to be our struggling year. And so that talks about the elementary. And then Maura, do you wanna talk about the?
Sure. And actually, just to, Minnie had said how, talked about how the fifth grade had better performance on the test over fourth grade.
Fourth grade did better performance.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay. Fourth grade gets better performance, fifth grade gets better value added. Sixth grade does very well on performance, but yet it's been a, something that for the past three and a half years is baffling me in terms of why we have such a drop between fifth grade and sixth grade in terms of value added. But part of it is because of the high value added that fifth grade does get, but yet it's still something that although we're, we think, we think, we think a big part, and I say we, me, me- we, me maybe right now in terms of looking at this trend and trying to, trying to talk with people is, part of that is a transition piece from fifth grade to sixth grade. It brings a lot of more, a different challenge for kids. So that's one thing, maybe trying to get better support systems in place for that or route to surround the academics. Because although we're seeing improvement on performance on those tests, we're still not trying to get kids to a point, they may score accelerated or advanced three years in a row and still score advanced or accelerated in the sixth grade, yet for some reason, we're just not getting them to, to get that one-year growth for those students in terms of how they perform in the fifth grade and sixth grade. So looking at that, but definitely there's, it is a trend that is concerning and still trying to figure out what the, what's the magic there. But I think transition's a big piece.
Can one of you explain? I struggle getting my arms around the whole value added concept. So can, so if I figure if I'm struggling with that, maybe other people struggle with that. Can you explain that?
I'll start and then I'll let Mindy finish up, okay? When we look at two things, and that's the biggest thing, because we get performance, we get a performance score, did the kids pass the test essentially, okay? And then also too, even though, since we have a student in the audience here, you know, and I don't know Drew's scores, doesn't matter, but, you know, he, in terms of if he passed the highest, you know, got top score on the test last year, our big thing too is, yeah, we want him to do well in terms of scoring, but we also want to make sure that Drew comes into sixth grade at a place wherever he finished up in fifth grade. We want to make sure that he's increasing, he's getting more growth out of that year, not just staying stagnant or dropping, even though we know he might score really, really well in this test, and I'm sure he does. We also want to make sure he's getting individual growth in a year, so we move him up higher in a year, not just to pass the test, but to just get more personal growth in the year in terms of academics.
So question, a statistical kind of question I would have is, would it be more difficult to have value added after a particularly high year like the fifth grade? Is that a bigger challenge? I mean, fifth grade has very high value added, and so is that part of the explanation for sixth grade?
Statistically, they would tell you no. Statistically, they would say...
What about reality?
Because, well, your higher kids are going to be the ones that are going to challenge because once you reach a certain level, it's really hard to keep gaining that growth. So your really high kids, that's a piece. For the other ones, it's really, are you moving along at the same rate as all of the other fourth graders that were in your same level? Are you keeping pace with them in fifth grade? Are you keeping pace with them in sixth grade? Are you keeping pace with them in, you know? So it, when they do the statistical analysis, it, where, if you have high growth from one year to the next, that doesn't affect it. However, if your students are scoring at a high level, that will affect it.
So that's reality.
So the highest level is, are the ones that we really struggle with. And that's because once you reach a certain level, it's really hard to go from the 99th, you know, to the 100. You know, there's less room for that growth because they're already, you know, stretching it. So that's a piece that plays into it as well.
And just kind of be a sports analogy with it too, is if someone can come in doing 25 sit-ups in a minute versus someone who can come out doing 200 sit-ups in a minute, in terms of get the person's doing, it's going to be harder. And what are the keys and how do you get that student to perform, who's already performing at a high rate, to get more than 200 sit-ups in a minute?
That was my point. So if fifth grade is 200 sit-ups, and if we do this by grade level, then it would almost be natural that you would have less value added. I understand statistically they don't weigh that, but then you would have less value added that next year. And by the way, it would almost be natural that you would have more value added the next year because you just underperformed in growth rate.
Which is part of what happens with fifth grade because fourth grade has such low value added. So fifth grade has made up for what they didn't get in fourth grade and for their value added for that year. And so that explains a lot of fifth grade being so high, which may play into why seventh grade gets better as well.
I think that's part of it. Yeah, I mean, definitely.
Yeah, there are some, yeah.
It's reality versus statistics. I mean, but I think a big part of our reality too is that it is that transition piece. It's like, what are we missing? So we all start looking at that. It's like, okay, let's start talking about what's going on and what else, what's the other piece that we're missing that we can't see on paper.
And our value added piece is the piece that I would say has, if you're going to put more emphasis, the growth that we see with our students overall in value added, I think speaks volumes compared to the indicators that we may or may not get as a district or as a building for those pieces. Because even if they're not hitting the indicators, you know, fifth grade, we didn't do so hot on indicators. But if you look at their value added, those kids are coming in and making huge gains even though they're not passing the test, which means that they're taking them from where they came in and getting them to, you know, gain some skills and leave fifth grade with a much better foundation. And then they have to deal with transition, so it, you know, throws life in there.
We're going to look at some upward trends. One of the things you just talked about was performance index, which as the ladies talked about, is getting us to a higher level, getting our students to a higher level. And you can see that we have a nice upward trend with our performance index. Some might point out here, I was looking at some information released on behalf of the Ohio School Board Association and BASSA, the Educational Tax Policy Institute, that looked at a, how do, how do schools do on performance index in relationship to their poverty rate? And don't have a slide on this, but basically, and it's nothing, it didn't shock us any that the districts who have 90 or a little bit below poverty rate, 90%, their performance index was a lot lower than those of you have a 14% poverty rate. 14% most districts scored on the performance index at about 105. So I wanted, I was curious to see, about Newark, our poverty index go anywhere from 58 to 62%. Seems to bounce back and forth a little bit monthly and yearly. That 98.1 right here, okay, based on their study, should be down 90 to 92%. And so we actually, with our poverty rate, score in an area with a 45% poverty rate schools. And I think that says a lot about what we're doing with our kids. So we've taken that poverty rate and increased by about 15%. So that was just something that caught my eye. Maura, you want to talk about math?
Yeah, sure. Actually, I'm going to talk a little bit, then I'll let Mindy do it. Since we're looking at some of the trends here too, overall, even though we took a slight dip this past year, I think, I think in general, in terms of trying to, and I do, I do attribute this a lot to trying to, and as Mindy said, to trying to get everyone on the same page, making sure that what we're doing is consistent from building to building, and just a lot more professional development. I think that is surrounding a lot of these upward trends that we're seeing. And even, even for some of the other things that we still need to work on, there's still a lot of professional development to support how we're, how we're going to, you know, work on getting those trends to move a different direction. But in general, I think a large part of the eighth grade, you know, it's, I'm sorry, that was fifth grade that took a little dip. I'll let Mindy talk about that. But anyway, in terms of overall, I think, I think it's just a matter of getting teachers an opportunity to collaborate, making sure that we do have a lot more resources to support them, and just making sure they get the coaching that they need so they can, they can better meet the needs of the kids in the classroom. And trying to really look at it student by student in terms of what are the instructional strategies that we can put into place to make sure kids are performing and being successful at greater levels. So in my particular case, working with middle schools and high school, I think that PD piece is a big part of that, you know, just really looking at an individual student as opposed to the entire eighth grade or ninth grade or 10th grade as a whole. It's the, it's the one by one, what can we do better?
And I would agree, although eighth grade, or eighth grade, fifth grade took a slight dip. If we really look at that by numbers of kids, that's not a large number of kids, so statistically it's not a huge dip, but we will want to watch that. But one of the things is just that conversation about math and what is it and do the kids really understand it? And making sure that there's a deeper understanding of math rather than teaching them all the tricks of the trade, so that we teach them the easy ways to find answers, not really the meaning with, that is behind why the math works, so that when they hit the middle school and high school, hopefully it's supporting them to help build that as well, so that they leave elementary with a stronger foundation in math.
Reading, I mean, it's the same, it's the same type of thing, but I think a big part of this too is working with the other content areas to support more literacy strategies in the classroom. I think that has a big part to do with it. Is, it's not, it's not the English teacher or the language arts teacher's job to make sure that Jeff Anderson can read the science textbook, or make sure that he can look at the social studies content. It's the literacy strategies that you have to employ in the different classrooms because it takes different skills in order to read something that's nonfiction versus fiction. And although there's a lot of nonfiction in the language arts classrooms, the reading really does come from whether it's in a fine arts classroom or a math classroom to that extent too of how are kids accessing that content and what are the literacy strategies we put into place? I think at the secondary level, a big part of that too is probably the RTI piece in the effect that we, if students are identified as struggling reader or need additional support, it's a responsibility of all teachers in the building, from PE teachers to advanced physics teachers if the case may be, to make sure that they're tracking the literacy strategies to give individual practice to certain students. So I think that's a big part of that rise with that, is the fact that the other supports we put in place, you know, the English teachers are doing a great job, but it's also all the other teachers that are supporting that literacy movement. And I'll just start with science too. That's, that's been an ongoing, how do we get better? And once again, it's more of a focus too on the professional development support, really looking at the curriculum again, not that they weren't trying to do their best before, but really trying to break down and align the content to the standards, looking at those tests and making sure that we take out anything that isn't going to, you know, we all want to do the fun project or the fun assignment, but some, you know, it's great, there's a place for that, but we really want to make sure that we are hitting the nuts and bolts first before we support them. And I think the teachers have done an excellent job of doing so over the last few years and as they always have. But as I said, once again, I think it's more of the professional support that they get and the collaboration time that they're given in order to make those adjustments in the classroom.
I would point out too, that if you look at the grade line, the science, how, you know, we talked way back in 2009, 2010 about our science scores and never getting that point in the high school where we got 75% of our 10th graders passing. And last year, to get an indicator point, and last year and the previous years beyond that, to get an indicator point, you need 75% passage. And if you look, as Maura talked about, we put a focus on that, and our teachers have done a very good job, and also the students. And lo and behold, this year, we got to a 75% and they moved the indicator to eight. So we would have gotten that indicator this year had, had, but I do want to point out that our staff and students have worked hard to raise that. Because you, you know, in four years, we're up, you know, 10, 11, 12 points on the passage in the 10th grade. And so that, I want to point that out, that's really good. Proud of our group for that. So we talked a little bit about, you know, we did this, what are we doing to improve, you know, particularly with the grad rate? And I think Maura and Mindy both touched on things that we've had a lot of discussion here on. It started last year, but it's picked up steam this summer, and we're really focused on this. You look down through that list and you see freshman focus day. That day drew out, Barb, Mindy, Maura, and Doug, one day in February, driving to Hilliard on a, I don't know what it was, a holiday, because nobody was in school here or there. And seeing what they were doing with their freshman focus, Hilliard was doing a three-day, they had a four million dollar grant somewhere in there and doing some really neat things. And so we came back from that visit and talked a lot about doing things in Newark way. And that's where our freshman focus day grew out of, which is our freshmen on campus. And that's been really positive. I've heard a lot of positive comments from parents and students about that day. And so when you, when you go down and you heard Maura and Mindy talk about sixth grade scores and those type of things, we're, we're working hard and we're going to look at it at a plan to implement a transition program from elementary to middle school. What that looks like, we're not sure yet. I doubt we would say, hey, all sixth graders in the building alone. Might not be that, but it might be, I don't know, that first day. But we're, we've got a few staff members, our leakage coordinators, and also a high school staff member that visits the middle schools and do a lot of work with students there on a charge to, to do something, to have that transition program from elementary to middle school. And so, but when you look here, the leakage coordinators, we have three of those, our Play-Doh classes, our school event at school, we're doing some really neat things, pay to participate fees, suspension. And it's not like that. I sat in a room in a meeting the other day with about 19 superintendents, and we were pretty close to only school that did not have a pay to participate in that room. And our numbers from a student engagement standpoint have really been positive. We talked about our freshman focus day, senior checks, early literacy initiative, response intervention was our RTI. Our PE program, of course, Call to College is huge on Call to College and the PE program right now, I think you're going to see a benefit five, 10 years down the road on getting into the elementaries and the good work that those people do. Our graduation rate committee, particularly with the focus on our community groups, we're really appreciative of all the community groups that step in and the community involvement in our schools. And that's why I wanted to show this tonight, the actual graduation rate, to show our people, you're making a difference. And we didn't take a giant leap, step back. And so we actually did not. And so we're getting that evidence to show that right now. We actually took a step forward, which is a positive thing for our community to see. Everything that our community is doing is making a difference for kids to graduate. So questions or comments? Last thing, I'm going to mention this, as I was thinking about during that, if you compared indicator points from this year to last year, had they not moved it from 75 to 80%, which a lot of schools in Newark's category suffered from that, that's lived on a 76, 78% passage, getting an indicator point. If you last, if you went by last year's 75% passage, we would have gotten 22 of 24 indicator points on the grade card, which would have been an A instead of the C that we got. So, but the reality is, it's now 80% to pass. And so, you know, we'll work towards that goal. So, now, questions or comments?
As we're sitting here digesting it, the state is sitting there revising it again.
Sure. Yeah, I don't, you know, it's just been a process of, you know, trying to understand why they didn't factor in those dropouts last year than they did this year and will for the next couple of years. Interesting stuff.
And I think it's important to comment too that this is what the state evaluates. It's not a total picture. There are so many things that we're doing in this district, the way of community involvement, working with our kids in different ways, is not evaluated here. And whether it ever will be or not, who knows, but I think we're working toward the complete person, whereas this is a snapshot. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, ladies. Thank you, Doug. Communications from the floor. This is the point at which anyone can step to the podium, podium? The podium? You can grab a microphone from Seth and address the board, give your name, your address, speak for up to five minutes. Okay. We'll move on to treasurer's recommendations. Jeff?
I have 2A, it's approval of minutes, Board of Education meeting for September the 8th, 2014, regular meeting. September 12th, 2014, special meeting. I have 2B, it's approval of the September 2014 financial statements and payment to the vendors, which included interest turn in an amount of $2,137.87. Our general fund balance is $22,640,000. Bond retirement is $3,410,000. Permanent improvement is $1070,000. Building fund is $100,000. Food services, $10,005,000. OSSC project local is $120,000. OSSC... OSSC project state chair is $10610,000. Insurance fund reserve is $2140,000. Classroom facilities is $2710,000. Miscellaneous others, $680,000. For a total of $35,540,000, which balances to the bank balance, bank statement of $35,542.648 and 50 cents, to be exact. Item 2C is already been passed, the five-year forecast. Item 2D is approval of the fiscal year, 2015 supplemental appropriations. We had two increases. O-19 was for $2,000. 300 was for $7,400. The O-19 was that Target, Mandy Berkeley, has earned money for the book club and was given money from Target, it's $2,000. Then the leakage coordinator's got $6,000, and the Wilson choir got $1,400 after change in the supplemental appropriations. Item 2E is approval of change in student-worker hourly rate. We keep that in tune with the federal and state government, and we've already received notice that that is going to, highest minimum wage will automatically rise to $8.10, beginning on January 1, 2015. That would be item 2A, B, D, and E. If there are any questions or comments?
So moved. Any comments or questions? Jeff, call the room, please.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Superintendent's recommendations, Doug?
Okay, it's October, we're going to take a little break from our retirements here for a few months, although we're here, there's already a group that are lined up. We appreciate your early notice, so that we can, you know, begin to think about next year. I'll call your attention to item 4, supplemental contracts, and ask you to remove Jake Burns as middle school quarterback at Wilson, 7th grade. Jake will not be coaching that team. And then on the next page, if you go down to the S's, Andrew Ship will be at Wilson, not Liberty, but halfway down. Below him, Brent Smith, then will be at Liberty. And just for your knowledge, it's on here, Roland Watson will be at Harriage at basketball.
Wilson wasn't, or Ship, was that Wilson now?
Yeah, Ship's at Wilson.
What was the next one?
And Brent Smith is at Liberty. Two down from him, not here.
Good, got it.
We have position adjustments, salary positions adjustments, again, a lot of these, either they're completing coursework at, from school, or it's new teachers who now have their transcripts all in and approved, so that they can move across. Again, item 7, a list of substitutes, we're very hard on that. And item 8, we do not have any, so items 1 through 8.
Also, we need to pull out Robert Enson in the separate, pull out Robert Enson.
Yes.
Okay, we would entertain a motion for superintendent's recommendations, A, 1 through, that was 7, with Jake Burns pulled out and Robert Enson pulled out. Questions, comments? Okay, call the room, please.
Jeff? Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
With that, we would entertain a motion to approve Robert Enson as middle school wrestling coach. So moved. Do we have a second? Comments or questions? Okay, call the room, please.
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
I'm staying.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
Okay, under item B, students in curriculum, B2 is a list of the special education contracts with various schools where we have our students placed out there through foster care. B, therapy services agreement. C, approval of contract with Ohio State University Speech and Language Hearing Clinic. Item 6A, establish a speech club at Newark High School, which we appreciate, gives our students another opportunity to do something. B then is the out-of-state field trips, there are two Spanish students in Nicaragua on March 25th through April 1st, which is spring break, and then the choir students to Toronto, Canada, on that long weekend where we have one of those days off, April 10 through the 12th. Item C, gifts, we're very fortunate, again, I say this about every month, but pretty much every month, we have somebody being generous to the district. So we have a monetary gift of $250 from Woodside Presbyterian Church for the key club. We have school supplies from Walmart Heath, value unknown. Derek Holland, pitcher for the Texas Rangers, to the C-Tag Program, $2,500. So thank you, Derek, for your generous donation. And Target Corporation for Cherry Valley Kindergarten Book Club, $2,000. Appreciate all of those generous people. And then under D, business, there is no action.
Okay, we will accept a motion to approve items B, C, and that's it. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I will just mention, which I think I typically do on these out-of-state field trips, there is no board funds that is involved in this. Okay, call the room.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
Do we have a legislative rant on report? Okay, we'll move on to board discussion then. Start, that's it.
Just a lot of activities going on, sports, fine arts, go out there and see some stuff and get fast.
I think the Wild is coming back to Wildcat football. I think the team is definitely making headway, and we're all very excited and very supportive. Thank you, Coach. That I pass.
All right, well, tournaments are coming up for soccer and volleyball, so a chance to see them. I think this week, there's a Coral presentation on Wednesday night. A lot of good stuff going on in the district, and yet a two in a row is a pretty nice, that would be a streak, and we'd like that. So, and of course, fantastic, all the middle school bands are marching with the high school band, halftime of the game, so that, there'll be, it'll be a really full field at halftime this week, so that'd be kind of cool also.
I just want to thank everybody who put together the presentation on the report card. It really helped me understand the differences, you know, those are these, these are the report cards, are these things that people pull down and kind of wave at you, and, and say, we're good or we're bad, and I think they don't understand sometimes the dynamics inside that. And it really helped me understand it as we went through it, so I appreciate that very much. And with that, I pass.
Glad to be a cat. Glad to be here. I continue to be amazed every month, like Doug mentioned, that seems like there's somebody who always steps up in the community to give a little bit extra to the schools and to the students that we have here in Newark. There's another one that walked in the door today, that's not on this agenda, it'll be on next month. It was an entire class that graduated from Newark High School, that's contributing and giving back to the community. So again, if you've never been in a community that didn't give back, you can't appreciate it as much as I do, but the school I came from, you never got the donations, you never got the support in the community. So I'm thankful to be a cat, and thankful to be a treasurer for this community.
Piggybacking off what Jeff had to say, is that this is class of 1989, Newark High School, at a reunion this summer, talked about helping the kids out here at Newark in a form that wouldn't be a scholarship, just for students who might be struggling with some things, and to help them out, and I think they've already raised over $1,500. And, you know, I sat in here and met with them today, and I was really proud. I wasn't the superintendent in 1989, as a fact, I think I was a first or second year teacher way back then, maybe a third.
First or second?
No, not first or second grade, or not, not quite, but, but in any event, you know, I was really proud to sit around a table with this group, and listen to them talk about what they want to do, and what it meant for them to be a graduate of Newark, and how they wanted to, you know, give back to the kids. And, you know, I mentioned bingo, that's that third C that we talk about, college and career ready, but we also want our, our students to graduate from Newark and be community ready too. And we've mentioned quite a bit here, how fortunate we are to be in a community with businesses and agencies and folks that give back so much to the school and the kids. We're fortunate that way. And, boy, if we can graduate students in 2014 and 15, that 20, 25 years from now, sit and talk about how they can impact kids, and how important it is to help their alma mater out, then somebody back in 1989 really did their job with a group of kids. And I just wanted to point that out.
And I have nothing to say that hasn't already been said, so I will not bore you with repeating what you've already heard. Everybody go yea. That wouldn't sound right. So with that, we would accept a motion to adjourn it into executive session for the purpose of the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee, and we do not anticipate taking any further action afterwards.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Bligh?
Yes.
Timeout is 7:32.